Good evening, welcome and thank you for being with us tonight. I am Michelle Fernandez of the League of Women Voters of San Jose and Santa Clara. The League of Women Voters is a trusted membership organization organization that encourages informed and active participation in government. We do not endorse or oppose candidates or political parties. The League participates in issue advocacy and voter education. The advocacy arm of the League may take positions on issues such as ballot measures. This forum is presented by the education arm of the League, which does not take positions or advocate for them. I would like to introduce our moderator for this forum, Gloria Chan Hu.
Hello, I'm sorry for the slowness in getting on. My name is Gloria Chan Hu and thank you, Michelle. My job today is to serve as the moderator for tonight's forum. And that is for the Santa Clara City Council District Five. We have two candidates. Before we begin, I'd just like to remind you all that the candidates have agreed to participate under guidelines that the League has set up. Most important, we are videotaping tonight's forum. And the session will be available through the League's website and on social media for the broader community to access. And you will be able to find links to those, to the website, links to this video on our, on our website. So let me now introduce and bring forward our two candidates who are running for District Five in Santa Clara City, and that's Suds Jane and David Curtis. Gentlemen, please join me. Thanks so much for being here tonight. I'd just like to go over some ground rules. First of all, we do have a timekeeper and I'd like to introduce her now. And she is a student from presentation high school, a senior. Vasha, my party, Vasha. You've got the signs there that will help our candidates stay close to the timing. You might just show our audience what those signs look like. And it's important that our candidates stick with the timetables as we've asked. And then there's the stop sign. Questions have been screened to avoid duplication and ensure that anything is inappropriate would not be asked. The order of answering the questions will alternate between the two candidates. Each candidate generally will have one minute to respond to each one of the questions. Although occasionally if a question seems to be more complex, I may allow a longer answer. And Vasha will keep an eye on that for us. Now, I think it's really important because people are in a, I think, a very situation where what is it that we want to achieve at this forum? We're here today to focus on what each candidate has to offer. We want to know about his or her qualifications and how they will impact, how they will govern, and what kinds of policies and priorities are important to them in their role should they become a city council member. Today's political environment sadly has become very divisive. The League encourages candidates to discuss their own personal qualifications, their actions that they would take, and to refrain from making and attacking other candidates. That is not appropriate. And we ask both candidates to again, serve in these guidelines. The forums today are designed to help a voter make decisions and not to further discord. So I appreciate the support in ensuring that we have a good discussion tonight. So we'll start with opening statements. Each candidate will have a minute to introduce themselves and say something about why it is that they're running for office. So we'll start with Mr. Suds Jane.
Yeah, hi, I'm Councilmember Suds Jane. For the past four years, I've worked hard to serve the residents of Santa Clara. My priorities are homelessness and affordable housing, rebuilding our downtown, environmental sustainability, and fiscal responsibility. When I took office in 2020, we had large deficits and we were drawing down our reserves. Now we don't have deficits and last year we were able to add substantially to our reserves. I started the homeless task force and pushed for interim supportive housing and deeper levels of affordability in our housing plans. I pushed the city to hire a sustainability manager. And now we have a very ambitious climate action plan. The downtown community task force held 44 meetings over four years to come up with a wonderful plan to rebuild our downtown. I attended many meetings and pushed for objective design standards. I've worked hard to build relationships with electeds in neighboring cities, which is why so many people have endorsed me. There's lots more to do and I have, and I have the experience. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. James. Now, Mr. David Curtis.
Sure, first of all, thank you to the League of Women Voters and everybody that's calling in tonight. My name is David Curtis. I've lived in the South Bay my entire life. I moved to Santa Clara in 1998 to start my family in this beautiful city and wonderful city. I'm running because I want to restore the trust and transparency of the city government by prioritizing honesty, integrity, ethical leadership, and getting along to get things done. I want to make sure that I'm using my business and financial background that I've had for 20, 30 years to make sure that we put together long-term strategic plans of 10, 15, and 20 years. So we make sure we understand budgets and taxes needed and so that we don't go into a portion where we don't have funds for a rainy day. I also want to improve access to sports. I want to make sure we reduce costs and allow families from working-class families to have their children. So I'm looking forward to coming on and bringing my business as well as finance. So we can get somebody that can really negotiate the contracts for the residents and citizens of Santa Clara. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen, for the introductory comments. Now, let's get to some of the questions that have been submitted to us. You both, thank you for sharing with us your priorities and some of the things that you feel important. But this question from this participant, this person is, how will you stay focused on the needs? And they're saying about specifically the residents in District Five. And how will you focus on those needs of that district? And it might be helpful for you at this time to have you describe District Five. District elections are relatively new for the city of Santa Clara. Please tell us your definition of District Five and how you respond to the needs of residents, particularly in your district. And then the question also says, and so that we can ensure that you're meeting the needs of residents and not those of outside interests. I'm not sure what that refers to, but I think the question is clear. They're interested in what you'll do for the individuals who live in District Five. And we'll start with you, Mr. Curtis.
Sure, thank you. So the first thing, walking around the district here in the last four weeks really gave me clarity on different issues that happen throughout District Five. It's not just strictly building a downtown. There's, there's much more to it than that. What I want to do to make sure we have the community involved is make sure I'm meeting at least twice a month with community members. So this could be a senior centers, coffee shop, lunch. I want to make sure that I'm open and meeting with the residents first. That's the most important thing. I've seen a lot of changes here since I've moved and they haven't been for the better. I want to make sure when we're making decisions and negotiations with corporations, large ones like the $6 billion NFL, then we have the residents in mind first. I think we've lost sight of the fact that residents are what make this great city and always have. We need to get back to that. We need to get back to working together with initiatives and priorities for this district as well as the other districts as well.
Thank you, Ms. Jane.
Yeah, this district is really defined, this is the old part of downtown of Santa Clara. We have our historic downtown here, which desperately needs to be rebuilt. And I worked very closely with reclaiming our downtown and a group of residents that want to rebuild that downtown. The other main issue for this area is the relationship with the students and the university. We have loud parties by the students with red solo cups in the streets and noise and all of that. So I have been on the board of the Old Cod Residence Association, which has worked to reduce mini dorms in the area and deal with issues with the students. I'm also on the NERC, the Neighborhood University Relations Committee, trying to work with the university to resolve these issues. I've taken a tour of the new STEM building at Santa Clara University. And so I live in a historic home and I appreciate these historic homes and want to preserve them.
Thank you. Mr. James, you referenced the old downtown and the fact that District Five incorporates this. A question asked by one person was, tell us more about plans to revitalize the old downtown. And should, should so many resources go toward that? Do you consider this the center of Santa Clara, the city of Santa Clara? And tell us about your rationale for why it's important to revitalize this area. And we'll start with you, Mr. James.
Yeah, so many residents complain that if they want to have a nice night out in Santa Clara or a nice night out with their family, they don't stay in Santa Clara. They go to Murphy Street in Sunnyvale, or they go to downtown Campbell or to Mountain View. And so people have been clamoring for places to go and for things to do in Santa Clara. And there's a group of people, we used to have a really nice downtown. It got torn down in the 60s and then laid vacant for years and years. And then what came was not that attractive. And now what we're trying to do is we're trying to build some density there with some housing and some nice restaurants so that people will have a place to go. I think it's important, some people were saying that, well, we just create a downtown in the north side as part of the related project, because that's been scaled down substantially. So I think it's important for people to have a downtown to go to and for us to spend our dollars here in Santa Clara.
Thank you. Mr. Curtis, same question?
Sure, the downtown is very important. I mean, I hear it when you do the night out and the dancing downtown. People want to see more of that, even dining outside. I agree with the precise plan. I think though that we need someone to lead it and drive it instead of just talking about it. I haven't seen much action from the council. And so we need someone to again, negotiate with developers, make sure that the next studies go through, work with the team on what are the timelines and next steps? I'm not seeing that. I've asked a lot of questions on that. And that's something I want to work with the team and understand what is it going to take? Keep in mind, interest rates now are two or three times what they were before. So what we have to do is look to be able to work with developers, not ask for everything, but we may have to give a little bit in order to get the downtown done. And let's do it in phases. Let's do a phase one. I have a historical home as well. I love the fact that the old quad is historical. When I look out my window and see Frozos and Togos, I'd rather see something like a Murphy or a downtown Campbell. That's what residents really want. So I think getting the first phase is the first important thing.
Now that you both talked about the importance of having a place for people to go to, I'll just toss a really fun question to both of you. When you have visitors from out of town, where do you like to go? And what are some of your favorite spots in Santa Clara? We'll start with you, Mr. Curtis.
Sure, my favorite spot is the awesome Rente restaurant. Treated very well there. I've been going there since the beginning. If, depends on who's coming in, if it's clients for business, I go to Rente. If it's somewhere I want to relax, I love going to Taplands as well. So those would be my two favorite. They're all in walking distance, don't have to drive anywhere. So that's, that's, you know, really fantastic, at least for me. That's, that's what I enjoy here. The Hut is also great. It's right down the street. Depending on when you go with SCU students, it gets quite busy. But I do admire the two places I just mentioned.
I guess we're both dancers. I'm not familiar with Santa Clara. Mr. James?
Well, we, we do, we're walking distance to the downtown, the Franklin Mall. And we go to the Jasmine Thai restaurant. But you know, if I'm bringing people from out of town, I'll first, I'll take them of a walking tour of Santa Clara University and look at the old mission there and the beautiful landscape grounds. That's probably the first place I'll take people. And then probably Santana Row, because I think Santana Row is very lively. It's got a lot of activities. But you know, we used to have this really nice restaurant that we frequented often, Mondo Burrito. A lot of old timers will remember that. And we had Wilson Bakery. And I'd like to bring places like that back to the downtown Santa Clara. We just had a nice coffee shop open, what's coffee? And, and so we're opening some places here in Santa Clara, but we, we really do have to try to figure out how to attract some of those almond pop restaurants and small places.
There is a question about how quickly or about development. The question is, what, what is, what can be done to expedite more projects to move more quickly from the planning stage to actual construction and building? And this one question in particular was asking about projects to create an entertainment and hospitality area near the Levi Stadium. Is there a problem? I don't know. I'm not familiar with the city politics. But in terms of this, this person, this resident's concern is, what could you do if you were elected to the city council to expedite the, the planning process so that projects move along more quickly? We'll start with you, Mr. James.
Yeah, so what we did was we did a precise plan for the downtown. We had a task force that we created that met 44 times. I attended many of those meetings. And the basic idea was to create, the, the problem is the state has taken away a lot of discretion by local cities. And you, you have to have objective design standards for your projects. So what we did was we used form-based code in the precise plan to create those objective design standards. We were planning to do the same thing for El Camino Real. So that when developers come, they don't have to redo an EIR. It takes forever to do an environmental impact report. So if they fit with the precise plan that we've created, they don't have to go do an EIR. We've made it easy. If they just meet the precise plan, their projects will sail through. The problem is funding. Right now, pretty much no one's building. No one has money related, has been stalled. Irvine's going to do a project because they have their own funding.
Thank you. Mr. Curtis?
Sure, I believe the question was about Levi area and entertainment. That's the related project. It's a $10 to $12 billion project. It is started, Tasman East Housing. They're looking to kick that off in 2026, where we'll have warehousing, small manufacturing, more housing, entertainment area, and parks as well. So that's going to be great. It was stalled and the reason why it took so long, there was a lawsuit with San Jose, city of San Jose. And that's what has stalled it. Actually, that is completed now. They can move forward. About three weeks ago, at the North Library, Related did have a meeting and showed people the design and gave them timeline. Now, of course, that's also going to be done in phases. So one of the phases is the housing, then they're looking at the small manufacturing, the warehousing. But that project is funded and is ready to move right now. So I'm looking forward to seeing that kickoff next year and seeing what develops and what we have there in 2026. It will take a while, but at least we're going to get that off the ground. And we'll see much more activity here in 2026 and 2025.
Thank you. We've talked about your priorities. We've talked about some things that you feel need to be done, particularly in terms of economic development. This question really has more to do with, I think sometimes residents are more familiar with just, you know, streets, roads, plumbing, you know, those kinds of things, cleaning. So how would you, what would you, what would you think in terms of District Five needs? Are some of the major issues or problems, perhaps services that are needing to be updated? So are you familiar with, and would you discuss what you think are things that need to be addressed specific to the district and/or services offered by the city? Mr. Curtis?
Sure, so we have Measure I, which is really important, Bond Measure I. It actually is really, it does a great job. It's about $150 to $200 a year for residents. That's going to help with our, our streets, our water, our sewer. I had my main sewer line redone and when they tried to hook it up to the street, you know, they have these old, you know, pipes and terracotta ceramic. And with, you know, trucks going over and shaking the houses, these are older houses. I think it's ruining the pipes down there. So I think it's going to be really important for the sewer and the water right now. What's also important is making sure we keep our firefighters and police. There's a grant that expires in 2026. I want to make sure we keep those 18 firefighters on so we can keep our quality of life and the safety. That's really important to residents as well. And that's, that's what has to happen, but we really need Measure I. And I think that's something everybody agrees on, which is a, which is a great thing, the entire council. So that's what I'm seeing so far in walking around. There is issues with, you know, some of the college students as well that we still need to work on.
Thank you. Mr. Jane?
Yeah, this is the historic area of Santa Clara. So we have 100-year-old infrastructure. In fact, there's an area called Park Court that celebrated the 100th anniversary of the building of those homes. And they have severe issues with, the water table's very high. They have intrusion of water into their basements. And what happened was this last February, we had a massive rainstorm that ended up taking out power. And some of these people have pumps that run constantly. And the lack of power for a couple of days caused their basements to get flooded. And they lost water heaters and washers and dryers and such. So we have to harden the infrastructure against these big storms that we are expecting to get due to climate change. And so that means maybe extra maintenance and replacing poles in that area, redoing some of the sewer systems. And that's why I support Measure I. The city council has unanimously, unanimously put forward a $400 million bond measure.
Thank you. Well, it looks like some of those issues with infrastructure will be resolved. Thanks, presuming this bond measure passes. Turning to sort of a, a different area. And I think this is a more complex and difficult one. And I think you probably all are expecting this question. It's a question that has been in the public eye a great deal. And that won't make this a two-minute response. The grand jury report was very critical of how the city of Santa Clara is acting. And it raised concerns about ethics, behavior, and accountability. I don't want to get into the details of that report. I'd just like to get your response in terms of what actions you think are important to take and that you would push for, support to ensure that the city council in the future, I'm looking forward and not backwards, functions in a more effective, principled, and accountable manner. We'll start with you, Mr. James.
Well, there were multiple grand jury reports. There were three, in fact. The first one was called unsportsmanlike behavior. The other one was called irreconcilable differences. And the third one was called outplayed. And so the first one claimed that members of the council had put the 49ers' interests ahead of the city's interests. They didn't have any evidence of that happening. In fact, as soon as I got elected, we relaxed the curfew for concerts that went past 10:00 PM on weeknights. And we've had numerous concerts since then. And each of them have brought a million dollars of profits to the stadium authority. What people don't realize is that when the stadium was built, and I actually opposed the stadium. I knocked on doors, I donated money. I didn't think a city as small as Santa Clara should have a stadium because of the traffic and the noise and the hooliganism. And so I knocked on doors to oppose it. The 49ers outspent us. They spent $5 million. They outspent us over 100 to 1, and they got their stadium. Then when I got elected, the stadium was here. So I had to deal with this contracts. And the last grand jury report outplayed said, yeah, 12 years ago, the 49er lawyers were smarter than the city lawyers. And the contracts were written in favor of the 49ers. That's something that I inherited. And so I've been working really hard and I've had many, many meetings with the 49ers to try to understand those contracts. And I think I've understood them well enough to be able to get a pretty good settlement. I mean, settlements are always a compromise. You don't get everything you want. But by doing the settlement, we were able to open up the contracts. Normally you can't open up contracts. And we got a much better deal that will deliver $20 million over the next two years.
Thank you. Mr. Curtis, your comments about this?
Sure, so I've read the three grand jury reports. They're very important. They give you what the residents are feeling. You know, we have a council that can't get along. We also have a council that doesn't vote for the residents. They kind of vote in a slate. And the residents don't want that. They want independent council members that think of the residents and vote. Many of our votes this past three and a half years have been five to two type of votes. Not all, but many. The Niners are going to be here for 20 to 30 years. You know, whether you like it or not, or voted for Jay. So we have to work with them, but we should work with them with the residents in mind. The first thing that the council has to do is work together. It's just like a business. When I go on my board of directors or my executive team, if we spoke that way, we'd be fired. We take ethics training. You have to take an ethics test each year. We should be doing the same exact thing on the council. You don't always have to see eye to eye, okay? But you need to have respectful debates and look at the pros and cons. And sometimes, hey, your residents are going to win when you say that. And sometimes it's going to be voted against. But it's, the first thing you need to do is build a trust. I hear a lot of people saying they won't shake my hand, they won't go to lunch. Well, you need to work on that. You know, that's the first thing when I go to a new company I do is I have to build that trust. I have to work with them. I have to find something. Maybe they're, they're into basketball. So we talk about basketball and start that. Then we go have lunch or we have breakfast and work together. But people are tired of seeing the council not working together. So that's the first thing that has to happen. And again, we have to put residents first, whether it's a $1 billion corporation or a $6 billion NFL team, they shouldn't be trying to tell the city how to run. The residents have been here for a long time. We need to listen to the residents. And that's why it's more important to have meetings with residents than, you know, having five times the amount of meetings with, with corporations. We also have to get back to a corporate-friendly city. So we bring in more tax revenue, so it's less taxes on the rest of the residents. And that's something that has to happen. We have to get more corporations. It's a great, safe city, low electricity bills. That's what we need to push.
Thank you. Very controversial and both of you have different perspectives. This is a very specific question about participation in, in, in city government. Currently, there is a requirement that one must be a citizen or a registered voter to serve as a member on any city commission. Therefore, people who may reside in Santa Clara, who may even be, who are perhaps paying taxes, working, sending their children to school, but are non-citizens have no voice. Yet they may own homes and in many respects are, you know, residents who live in Santa Clara. What are your thoughts about having them serve on city commissions? And why do you think that there's the, the current requirement for a citizenship is important? If you agree to that, we'll start with you, Mr. Curtis?
Sure, I think every resident should be able to be on a committee. If they're here legally and they're working, they're paying taxes, why shouldn't we hear their voice? We need to make sure we keep committees as diverse as possible and we hear from everybody, whether that's seniors, whether that's somebody came from a different country three to five years ago, maybe their parents came from a different country. I would have to look into that a little bit more to understand maybe why we have that. But I don't understand why you would need to be a citizen to, to be, you know, on a committee. It's not like you're a councilor or a mayor. So that's something I'm going to have to educate myself on a little bit more. So that's something I'll take a note and look at and see why we may have decided that before. But for me, I would, I would open, I want as many people serving in the community. And that's just going to make us a better city when you have all your citizens able to, to speak and work and, and, and help define what strategies and what the future is going to look like. Because they have their children here as well, their children, and their children's children. So again, for me, I would like to have things more diverse. But I need to look into, was there a specific reason on why we did that? So that's something I'll, as I said, I'll look into. But thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jane?
We have certain commissions that are outlined in our charter, the library commission and the planning commission and some others. And the charter actually says that they must be citizens. They must be voter, voting residents of the city. It's not something that I agree with, but it would require a charter amendment change. We did recently change for our bicycle and pedestrian advisory committee. So committees are different and they're not in the charter. And so for those, we have changed the rules so that they just have to be residents. So there is movement in that direction. I fully agree that I don't see why someone who's not a citizen cannot be on our library commission, because we have a lot of immigrants that attend our libraries. And they should have their voice to be able to say, yes, I'd like to have some Hindi books or some Mandarin books there, you know? So it's just a matter of changing our charter. And changing our charter requires a charter review committee. I've actually served as chair of one of our charter review committees. It's a lengthy process and it's expensive process because you have to go to the voters to be able to get them to agree on charter changes.
Thank you. Vasha, just for your information, we're back to one minute for, for the, it was just that one question, it was two minutes. All right, how do you feel? This is a question about the relationship between the city of Santa Clara and Santa Clara Unified School District. The, the question is, how do you feel about the relationship between the two? And I think the concern or the question is that the school district may be charging Santa Clara nonprofits and youth groups. the school district may be charging Santa Clara nonprofits and youth groups to use their facilities. So I think the question really is about those payments and perhaps what the city can do with it. I'm making an assumption here. So, Mr. Jane, if you're familiar with the issue, you can speak to it. How do you respond to that? The relationship between Santa Clara and the, the school district?
Sure. When I was a kid, we used to just have pickup baseball games at the elementary school. We'd just show up and we'd play there. There were no fences. Now we live in a different era and the school district has put fences and locked gates around all the schools. So I think we have very limited land. We should be able to share the ball fields there. Now, what's happened is that the city has started charging for its own fields. But they're, you know, 80 to 90% subsidized. They're very heavily subsidized. And the school district has decided that, you know, their mandate is to take the money that they have and serve the educational needs of their students. So to have ball fields that are that heavily are free cost the money because they have to maintain the, the ball fields and soccer fields and such. So it's an issue of where there's always limited money and where you decide to put your money. So there is some contention about charging for fields.
Thanks, Mr. Jane. I think that, that helps gives us some background. Mr. Curtis, your comments about this, and then I may do a follow-up to this?
Sure. First of all, youth sports is important and vital to health and safety of children. Gives them a safe place to go, helps them with growth as part of team building. That's one of, you know, I, I coached, last year coached Westside Little League. I've done four years in Santa Clara Youth Soccer League. I think it's very important. I see what it, what it does and how it helps kids. I, I think one of the things with, with the school, I, I think we can work closer together. I don't want to put any, anybody down on either side, but we should look at cost and look at also at the percentage of use. You know, when you look at baseball fields, the cost may be a lot less than a soccer field for some of the upkeep. So I would look at that and maybe that's tiered. Maybe slow down the rate that we're increasing the hourly, hourly rate. That's something we could, you know, possibly look at with the school board. Went to one meeting. We have another meeting coming up with Parks and Recs. But we're just talking about the school here, you know, looking at charging for different sports, opening it up as well. Right now it's closed off for kids that want to use a track or anything like that, and they can't because it's chained off and it's closed.
Thank you. I, I think I would just follow up because I think, Mr. Jane, you, you were giving us some background and it's important, I think, for, for residents to understand the, the economic dynamics of providing services like fields. I wonder if you might both speak a little bit more. I, I think, Mr. Curtis, you started talking about some potential solutions, but I wonder if you might each take another 30 seconds to talk about some things you would actively do to, to perhaps alleviate this problem that you think would be steps to help support that if you think it's doable. And if not, then tell us why not. And we'll start with you, Mr. Curtis?
Sure. So right now, you know, it's, it's very expensive for kids. I have my kids playing two sports, fall ball and soccer, and another one playing soccer. It's about $750. So, you know, we need to look at some of the costs. One of the ways to look at the cost, though, we have a scholarship program where we only spend about $8,000 of $30,000 that we can have. I think we need to market this a bit more so we can show that we do offer reductions for families that can't afford it. And then work with the school board, taking a look at what the costs are going to be over the next five years. Is there a way to slow that down at all? Is that something the, the city might be able to help with?
Mr. James, do you have some specifics that you might point to that you think could be done?
Sure. We live in a very wealthy area. You know, if you have two parents that work at Nvidia, it doesn't make sense to get a huge subsidy for, or free sports for those people. So we have this thing called the Wade Brummel Fund, where we charge out-of-city residents $25 for sports. And we use that to provide scholarships. When I got on the council, I inquired on the Wade Brummel Fund and the staff didn't actually know how those funds were being used, how much money was in the account. And so I've actively worked to use that money to provide scholarships to people that can't afford to play. Because no child should be left out.
Thank you. I, I'm sure the, the question is, God, that both of you have an interest and concern about that and have different approaches to it. Final question, and it's the one that, Mr. Jane, you alluded to in your opening comments, and that is about climate change. This is an issue that the league has focused a lot on, so I like to ask the question. Do you feel that the city has done enough to respond to climate change in terms of doing things to be both a sustainable city and have made the adaptation for what we see happening in, in other parts of the United States? Start with you, Mr. James, since you did talk about some of your work in this area, but the question really is, is, is it enough?
So I worked high tech for 25 years. And then after seeing Al Gore's movie in 2007, I retired to work full-time on climate change. And so that actually brought me to being on the Planning Commission because they do the Climate Action Plan. And the Climate Action Plan was not very good, so I wanted to improve that. We didn't have a full-time sustainability manager. Other cities smaller than us had those. So now we have a full-time sustainability manager. I put in a very strong climate action plan, 80% reduction by 2035. We have an all-electric reach code now. And I've been working very hard to do VMT, vehicle miles traveled reductions, mode shifting, getting people out of their cars, adding bike lanes to the city. I've been the champion. Climate or sustainability, environmental sustainability was not a priority on the priority list for the council before I got here. Now it's one of the priorities. And I've been working with the schools. I got Santa Clara High to start offering AP Environmental Science, even though Wilcox had it, but Santa Clara didn't. So now they have it.
Thank you. Mr. Curtis?
So as we get to climate change, obviously, you know, more water coming in, we need to make sure we clear out some of the creeks and waterways that we have so we don't have flooding for residents. We also need to understand our strategic plans to understand the future needs. So what is the sewer? What are the water needs? You know, some of the water right now, when you run off, we don't collect it. It just goes into the bay. We do have a water treatment plant that's in Albezo. We should be looking at, you know, can we pump that down to the aquifer? I know right now California has some limits on doing that. So that's something we should look into. We also need to, as we're doing sewer and water with the Measure I bond, we should also be looking at, can we get gray water to more residents? So if we can use that gray water for their landscaping, that's going to help as well. We also need to look at strategic plans for electricity. You know, what electricity needs do we need 10, 20, 30 years from now? Make sure we're building that as we have more water heaters that are electric, stoves are electric, cars that are electric. There's going to be a big need from our power source. And we need to really make sure we're looking into that as well.
Thank you. Final question, and just a fun question because we asked it at our two other forums, but I liked it. If a genie were to appear and gave you the opportunity to have one wish granted for your district, what would it be? And of course, not your election, but what would you do for the genie's wish? Mr. Curtis, we'll start with you.
I would go back to the 60s and make sure we do not demolish our downtown. We had a beautiful downtown. Now it's going to cost $5 billion to put it in for what we had before. You know, that would be my wish. I would love to have that. It would be better than Campbell and Los Gatos. And everybody talks about Sunnyvale. We had an awesome downtown. People still talk about it when I'm walking the district. So if I had a genie, that would be my wish is to go back in time, make sure we never demolished it.
Thank you, Mr. Jane.
I'm going to think bigger. I actually serve on the BART Oversight Committee to bring BART to Santa Clara. My wish would be if we had BART to Santa Clara in the next five years. But that's a big wish because that's a $12.7 billion project that might even go higher. But now it's slated to come in in 2037. I don't even know if I'll be around by then. So that is my wish, and that would bring a lot of, you know, reduced carbon emissions of people traveling. We have a 2.9 jobs to housing ratio. So three times more people come to Santa Clara to work here than live here. And so if we could bring BART here and reduce all those car trips and then also build a station area plan, maybe put 10,000 housing units in our station area plan, something that I spearheaded. And that we would have more housing here and have fewer people coming. But BART to Santa Clara would be a great thing.
Well, thank you, Jen, for two, two wonderful wishes. It's now time for us to have your final comments. I believe we started the opening comments with Mr. Jane, so we'll start the closing comments with you, Mr. Curtis. You, and, and this will be a, a two-minute close.
Sure. So again, first of all, thank you very much for everybody that's called in and the League of Women Voters. I really appreciate the opportunity to speak with everybody. Some great questions tonight. I'm coming from a private sector. I want to bring some of the strategic planning, the initiatives, the key KPIs people will, will know about key, you know, initiatives. Make sure we're using visual management, making sure we are not signing up for 38 initiatives, but maybe initiative for each district and then one or two that the council can agree on. So we make sure we actually get them completed. The strategic plans are very, you know, very important to me. I do this in business. Need to make sure that we are looking out, not just for ourselves. I don't, you know, maybe I'm not here in 30 or 40 years. My kids are going to be. So what's going to be needed over the next five, 10, 15 years? I want to see the city council get along. I want to see us for the residents. I don't want to hear about ethics. If I'm fortunate enough to be elected in January, you know, November 5th, but starting in January, I, I don't want to hear about a 49er five, release us later, all this. We're all independent. We should be looking out for the residents and, and what they need. I think we lost our way. And we see big dollar amounts. But as I said, we're here 20 to 30 years with 49ers. We got to make it work. We're going to have to make some, you know, hard decisions. We have a World Cup coming up. We could lose money as well as the NFL Super Bowl 2026 could bankrupt the city. So I want to use my negotiation and business skills to make sure we're looking at these contracts and they're fair to the residents. So we don't end up going bankrupt and, and losing money. Seattle and Vancouver are saying the World Cup is going to cost them 110. You know, losses. This, we can't afford that in this city. We can spend our money much better somewhere else in senior centers, schools, sports. I really want to make a difference. That's why I'm putting, you know, a lot of time into this and even more time if elected. And I hope I do get your vote. So thank you very much for your time today.
Thank you, Mr. Curtis. Mr. Jane?
Yeah. So I believe I have the experience to continue in another four years. I've submitted many, many initiatives, you know, making it easier to have live music in our restaurants. Used to cost $10,000 to get a permit to have live music. I served on Planning Commission for five years, so I understand that all of the state laws on affordable housing and ADUs and parking requirements. I went to APA, American Planning Association meetings and to understand housing law. I started, you know, one of the crises we have in this area is the cost of living here. You know, our kids can't afford to live in Santa Clara. Houses are $2 million. We have to figure out how to build more housing and to be able to bring down the cost of housing. I've worked very hard in our Patrick Henry Plan. I was actually on the Affordable Housing Nexus Task Force when we implemented 15% inclusionary affordable housing in all multifamily projects. But that was at 100%, 15% at 100% AMI, which doesn't meet the needs. And AMI, as you know, is $182,000 per year for a family of four. That's very high. You know, your baristas and your janitors and such gardeners, they can't afford that. So I pushed for deeper levels of affordability in the Patrick Henry Plan. I took the 15% and divided it into 5% extremely low income, 5% low income and 5% moderate. So now we're getting to those deeper levels. We have a RENA allocation in our housing element of 11,600 units. And so we're going to be building approximately 25,000 units because we have to build a lot of at-market, market-rate housing. And so that's going to cause lots of traffic congestion. So I put in very strong transportation demand management policies into the city to reduce traffic.
Well, thank you. Clearly have two, two exciting candidates for District Five. And I appreciate, Jen, and both of you. It's a lot for you both to be running. You commit time and interest in the city and government. Participation in democracies is really important. And so we thank you both for, for taking the time to be with us, to share your thoughts with our audience. And I want to thank our presentation high school student, Avashia, for her work on our time, timing. I'll now turn it back to Michelle for some closing comments. Thank you all.
Thank you, Gloria. On behalf of the League of Women Voters, San Jose, Santa Clara, I want to thank the candidates for running for this office and for their participation this evening. I also want to thank the audience for being present to meet with the candidates and for proposing thoughtful questions. Members of the League of Women Voters do the hands-on work to safeguard democracy. While we never endorse a candidate, we are directly involved in shaping important issues to keep our community strong. If you would like to be involved with the men and women helping making democracy work, it's easy to join the League. We encourage you to visit our website at lvsjsc.org. Also, if you are looking for trusted, nonpartisan, reliable information related to what is on your ballot, visit vote411.org. If you have moved or changed your name or wish to change your party affiliation since you last registered, you need to re-register. Last day to register is October 21st, 2024. Online voter registration is available at the Secretary of State's website, sos.ca.gov. Remember to vote by mail or at the polls by November 5th. And please encourage your family, friends and neighbors to vote.